Got you. Number seconds. Second slide, point for Geter. Smithville Board of Aldermen Meeting is now called to order. Please stand and join me in the pledge. Thank you. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Alderman Neuladall?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Alderman Russell? Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
I abstain.
Motion's approved. Next item on the agenda is committee reports. Alderman Atkins, do you have anything to report from DC?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Economic Development Committee was held on February twenty eighth. Started out with introduction of the committee members. Looked like some have changed and some additional ones were on board. We did a review of the committee job descriptions real quickly. We also had the role of the Economic Development Committee with any kind of tax increment financing. Explain to us what we can or cannot do and what we need to be looking at. As far as permits issued, we had one residential, one commercial. Sales and usage checks have been up for the first year, from last year. This is only from November and January. Six hundred and fifty-three license, business license have been renewed. So far, and twelve special events for the year have been scheduled so far. Biggest thing we wanted to do was discussion of the Economic Development Goals. In accordance to the strategic plan and constancy, strategic plan and our consa- consa- yeah.
Comprehensiveness.
Comprehensive, there we go, plan and our priorities for the two thousand twenty-three year. Our meetings will return back to monthly norm, monthly meetings until we get those priorities set. Gina, do you have anything to add on to this?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is City Administrator's Report. Ms. Wagner, do you have anything to add to your report?
I'll add a couple of items to what we provided. Got some news later in the week after this was posted. On Friday, and I believe I emailed the board, the RFQ for Animal Care and Housing was reposted. With a due di- due date for responses, June second. So that's nine, a ninety day posting. And then we also participated in the Art on the Move Sculpture Draft. Last week and were able to secure a bronze sculpture and Linda. Are you able to pull that up? I'll show you what we'll have. We are anticipating May delivery of that artwork. That will place somewhere on the square. We're, will evaluate either the corner that was included in Streetscape for art or over in the courtyard park. However. And as a reminder, there was a committee that went through and prioritized. There were over a hundred works of art available. And then were selected on a direct, through a draft process. And we had a committee comprised of Alyssa Sanders with Main Street. Jeff Becker, business owner downtown, Jeff Blomker, former alderman. Danny, well, excuse me, Danny Wilson, the Chair of Parks and Recreation Committee, Matt Damon, Matt Denton. Sorry, Matt, that was, uh, Denton and I, that, that's a. Is that an upgrade? So this is the artwork we'll be able to install. The committee was really excited about some opportunities to be able to market and promote this and hopefully attract folks because we see some potential for selfies and photos and inability to really market this. So kind of excited about that. One final item, wanted to just again call attention to the meeting schedule with spring break coming up. Election, so the March twenty-first meeting is canceled due to spring break. The April fourth meeting is moved to April third. And then again, later in the summer, we've got a couple of meeting cancellations. I do also want to call attention, we have been able to secure the MCC facility we used last year for our governing body retreat. And that is set for May ninth and we'll have additional information forthcoming on that. We'll really again focus on budget items. Mayor, that is my report.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number six. Alderman Neuladall?
Motion to approve bill number twenty-nine seventy-seven dash twenty-three conceptual plan, Fairview Crossing North, second reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. Do you have one public comment? Constance Scott, you know the drill. Please state your name and address and you have three minutes. If you need additional time, please let me know in advance.
Constance Scott, three zero eight Kalerni Lane. Mayor, Alderman, good evening. I hope you all are enjoying this spring-like weather. Last time I was up here, I was speaking of concerns regarding relying solely on a thirty-foot utility easement for adequate privacy. Tonight, I am here to say that Mr. Kreese has provided us with a positive solution to the privacy concerns. By offering to plant a row of screening trees to act as an additional barrier. And if he should sell, he is going to include a landscaping stipulation in that contract. This is a relief. We are incredibly grateful and it alleviates several concerns. Mr. Kreese has listened to our concerns, our questions and our grievances over this, and he has done so graciously and with patience. We know he easily could have told us to take a hike, no pun intended. But he didn't. He spoke with us and he listened. And while I'm sure we will still have some concerns and questions come up over this process. I am confident to say that I think we can continue to work in a positive and progressive manner. To close this out, I really wanted to say something clever about how we'll never probably be drinking beers and flipping burgers on a grill. But humor's not my forte. So instead, I'll just keep it to a simple thank you to Mr. Kreese and thank you for all of your time.
Thank you. I'll put it to the discussion for the board. Any items for the board? Alderman Chevalier?
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, this is a conceptual plan, Constance, you know, so when they do the other, the actual site plans and things. So you guys will probably want to make sure you're, stay involved with that process as well. Thank you.
Anyone else? Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Atkins?
Aye.
Alderman Shipley?
Aye.
Alderman Russell?
Aye.
Alderman Hartman?
Aye.
Alderman Neuladall?
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier?
Aye.
Six zero.
Swagner, please read the bill.
An ordinance approving a rezoning and conceptual zoning plan for Fairview Crossing North on certain lands located in the city of Smithville, Missouri, under the authority granted by the Code of Ordinances of the city of Smithville, Missouri.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number seven. Alderman Neuladall?
Motion to approve bill number twenty-nine seventy-eight dash twenty-three rezoning northeast corner of Second Creek and Lowman Road. From A-one to R-one B and R-three, second reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Alderman Shipley? Thank you.
I'm going to recuse myself.
Thank you, sir. First public comment is Roberta Lowman.
Now here I am again. I'm Roberta Lowman, one-six-two-five-one, Lowman Road. I am here to ask the Board of Aldermen and the Mayor to please consider one more time. To rezone the entire area, the thirty-two acres as R-one and not R-one and R-three. That is my big concern for all the meetings that I've attended. The development I am all for, but to rezone it with the R-three was never part of the original agreement. I'm asking all of you as our aldermen here, and my alderman has stepped out, who wears many hats. And I am just, I'm just beside myself really because I sit here and I think. To appeal to you all, if it was you that you sign a contract and you. I know it's not a court of law, but it is a court of aldermen and the mayor here that represent all of us as citizens. And I'm asking, please, if you proceed, please let it be rezoned as all R-one and not R-three. That's what I'm asking. I do have one other question too. I see like the budgetary information that was here in the prior meeting. The comprehensive plan and the eight-foot sidewalk and trails. I look on site and I cannot find, so I can print hard copies of that. And I would like if somebody could email me where I can acquire that information so I can print it. I would appreciate that.
The comp plan?
The comprehensive plan.
We can send you, I can send you a link to it.
And, and also the eight-foot trails and sidewalks, that's going to involve the Second Creek.
Information on the Second Creek sidewalk?
Cause what I've read online, it said that it would be twenty-twenty-six with the bond money, but yet then I see the developer is to proceed and pay for part of that. So I'm just trying to sort all the pieces and put the puzzle together. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy Hadley? Again, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes. If you need additional time, let me know in advance.
Thank you. Cindy Hadley, five-twenty Second Creek Road. I, me and my husband are longtime residents here in Smithville. We, I've been on this property for thirty years. And we worked very hard to make it our own. I have printed off the, some of the things that. Would help clarify what I'm going to talk about. You can see on the first page, the five-twenty address, that's my, our property. And this is the FEMA flood area. And then if you flip it over to the second page. This is all of the multifamily and the homes are in yellow that are surrounding our property. And I quote from Mr. Hendricks sometime in January, he stated that this to be out of the flood range would have to be elevated two to three feet. Above flood stage. And this is backed up right to the corner of my property, which is going to put me in a hole. Two feet at least. How have, has the developer presented a plan to keep the runoff from coming into my yard? Because the west and northwest corners of my property, our property is flat. The water doesn't run off. It has to soak in. And that much elevation. I don't see how it cannot come onto our property. If you look at the third page. This is the post-developed drainage plan. There's an arrow directly pointing to the west into my property. And if the multiplexes are elevated. The second page showed it right up against my property. How is it not going to drain there onto my property also, our property? So. Have, has the developer presented any kind of plan? Was it ever even an issue? Brought up before about runoff, stormwater runoff at all? I'm asking you not to do this. To our property. Please don't wreck our property. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Christine Bunch? Yeah, name and address and you have three minutes. Please let me know if you need additional time.
Christine Bunch, one-eight-six-zero-eight, Primrose. When is an okay time to speak up? When multifamily homes are built on single land, single-family home land contingencies? When buildings are built sideways between Meadow and Maine, when is it okay to speak up? Everybody says to come speak up. There is a contract that had a contingency. And I think you all know what that contingency is, but I thought I'd read it tonight. Contract contingency, this contract is contingent upon. Other additional terms and conditions on page one. We've all bought and sold homes before. Sometimes you can't buy another home until your current home is sold. Sometimes that's a contract contingency. In other words, sometimes things do not happen if a contingency is not met. The contingency in this contract says all homes in future subdivision will be single-family residence and resell between four hundred and five hundred per house. That what was, what was agreed upon, that is what was signed. Also, through Jack Hendricks, it appears that only single-family homes were presented. If you'd like to see it, I think you guys have already had this, but. If you want copies, there is copies. It's only single-family homes. So just like Roberta Lowman has said. Please keep this a single family, which I believe is the R-one. Okay. Thank you.
I'll open up to the board. Any discussion? Alderman Chevalier?
Yeah, so just about this drainage, Jack, could you speak to what the developers' plan was for that?
Yes, I can. The plan that was submitted for the first level of this review was put on the city's website. See, you can see it. It was quoted it here as well. It identifies where all the water goes now and where it'll go afterwards. Until anything's approved, they don't do the actual construction design plans. That will occur if this is approved. If it's not, they won't do the construction plan, which will identify those issues. So the current iteration estimation is most of the water that comes down the hill now will go into and be a detention basin. As where the lake is now, that little lake. That's where it'll go and it drains around the north side of everything into the river. It all drains north. Everything goes north in that area. So. Until we see the actual construction plans, we won't know how it's laid out, but that will obviously be an issue in those plans.
That'll come back when we do the next plat at finance.
No, that'll go to the engineering part of it. The engineering review of those plans, it has to meet those standards again.
But, but what I'm saying, what he was saying, I'm assuming is that once they start building, does, it has to come back to us when they have those building plans?
Well, no, it'll go through the engineering. Now, if it's approved, the preliminary plat, when it goes to final plat. You'll have the ability to see it, but the construction plans will have already been approved by the city's engineers. The board would then have the, the thumbs up, thumbs down on the final plat for recording. So yes, but there isn't a specific reviewing of, does this design work?
But I think the point John's trying to make is they're not going to start construction until all that is done.
Yeah, they haven't even started the design. Yeah, the design hadn't even started. Staff hasn't even got our first bite at the apple on reviewing it.
But, but again, the, the Board of Aldermen will have another vote on this in order to approve whatever their, their mitigation plan is.
Yes, any final plat has to get approved by this board.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Come here, I have.
Alderman Russell?
Yes, sir, thank you. So thi- this has been, for me, has been a lot of trying to make care of details on a lot of stuff here. But I know this much, that Ms. Lowman signed a. An agreement, a real estate sale contract. She had a licensee assisting, assisting her, who is a member of this board. That member of the board is also a member of the LMW Investments that bought that property. And now it does not have the request for single-family homes. It was in the, on the real estate sale contract. Now we're asking not only for that to be approved, but also for LMW Investments is asking. For a plat proposal that has an eight-inch bike path on it that runs through the property and lo and behold, is connecting with the citywide Platte County Connector. And that has been promised in the, in the, in the paperwork today, has been promised. To be paid for with grant funding from two thousand twenty-six. And we go by a year-by-year budget here. I'll tell you what, this thing stinks. It stinks to me. I'm saying political, political bias in my opinion, and it looks like a, some quid pro quo going on here. And I urge the members of this, this committee here to really pay attention to what we're approving or not approving on with this, this whole. This whole Lowman property. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Alderman Atkins?
Yes, sir. I know we had a brief discussion with our legal services. All of this should be on the table with them. I'm sure they're looking through everything there. So it's, it's, it's nothing new. It's, it's already been talked through to our legal department.
That's correct. And also. I know Alderman Russell's new to the board, but all development in the city of Smithville that's adjacent to trails, sidewalks, roads, developer pays for it, correct, Jack? All development. Pays for their own infrastructure. The grant funding through a MODOT grant for Second Creek sidewalks has nothing to do with this development. It's actually submitted Chuck Winn three years ago, two years ago? Yeah. So you can check those records as well. Any other discussion from the board?
A point of war, Mr. Mayor. It says that in the paperwork that we are reviewing tonight, that, that the grant funding to connect the bike path is based on two thousand twenty-six grant funding.
Correct. From Mid-America Regional Council through MODOT.
Correct.
Yep. So that construction will happen just like with our stuff we approved for. Commercial street sidewalks and Streetscape Phase Three. Those are all multi-year contracts because MODOT plans far in advance. Any other questions from the board? Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Shipley?
Aye.
Alderman Atkins? Alderman Chevalier?
Aye.
Alderman Neuladall?
Aye.
Alderman Russell?
No.
Four-one.
Motion carries. Ms. Wagner, please read the bill.
An ordinance changing the zoning classifications or districts of certain lands located in the city of Smithville, Missouri and entering into a development agreement.
Chief, we grab Alderman Hartman. Next item on the agenda has two readings. Since it is an emergency ordinance, number eight, Alderman Neuladall?
Motion to approve bill number twenty-nine seventy-nine dash twenty-three, amending certain provisions of chapter one-five-five, emergency ordinance. Sponsored by Mayor Bulleye, first reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Alderman Hartman?
Mayor, I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Hartman? Alderman Chevalier? Alderman Shipley? Alderman Neuladall?
Aye.
Alderman Russell?
Aye.
Alderman Atkins?
Aye.
Six zero.
Motion carries. Ms. Wagner, please read the bill.
An ordinance of the city of Smithville, Missouri, amending certain provisions of chapter one-fifty-five, article one, section one-five-five dot oh, one, oh. Subsection D of the Municipal Code of the City of Smithville, Missouri.
Thank you. Next item is the same bill, second reading. Alderman Neuladall?
Motion to approve bill number twenty-nine seventy-nine dash twenty-three, amending certain provisions of chapter one-five-five, emergency ordinance sponsored by Mayor Bulleye, second reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Alderman Russell, was that a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Russell?
Aye.
Alderman Shipley? Alderman Hartman? Alderman Chevalier?
Aye.
Alderman Atkins?
Aye.
Alderman Neuladall?
Aye.
Six zero.
Motion carries. Ms. Wagner, please read the bill.
An ordinance of the city of Smithville, Missouri, amending certain provisions of chapter one-fifty-five, article one, section one-five-five dot oh, one, oh. Subsection D of the Municipal Code of the city of Smithville, Missouri.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number nine. Also has two readings. Alderman Neuladall?
Motion to approve bill number twenty-nine eighty dash twenty-three, maintaining grocery receipts, tax payment of license fees under section. Seven-three-five dot zero-one-zero, emergency ordinance sponsored by Mayor Bulleye, first reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Alderman Hartman?
Mayor, I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Please call roll.
Alderman Neuladall?
Aye.
Alderman Atkins?
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier?
Aye.
Alderman Shipley?
Aye.
Alderman Hartman?
Aye.
Alderman Russell?
Aye.
Six zero.
Motion carries. Ms. Wagner, please read the bill.
An ordinance maintaining gross receipts, tax payment of license fees under section seven-thirty-five dot oh, one, oh of the city ordinances.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the same, second reading. Alderman Neuladall?
Motion to approve bill number twenty-nine eighty dash twenty-three, maintaining grocery receipts, tax payment of license fees under section. Seven-three-five dot oh, one, oh, emergency ordinance sponsored by Mayor Bulleye, second reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Atkins?
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier?
Aye.
Alderman Shipley? Alderman Hartman?
Aye.
Alderman Russell?
Aye.
Alderman Neuladall?
Aye.
Six zero.
Motion carries. Ms. Wagner, please read the bill.
An ordinance maintaining gross receipts, tax payment of license fees under section seven-thirty-five dot oh, one, oh of the city ordinances.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number ten, second, two-person, second reading. Alderman Neuladall?
Motion to approve bill number twenty-nine eighty-one dash twenty-three, fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, budget amendment number two, emergency ordinance sponsored by Mayor Bulleye, first reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Alderman Hartman?
Mayor, I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Chevalier? Alderman Shipley?
Aye.
Alderman Hartman?
Aye.
Alderman Russell?
Aye.
Alderman Neuladall?
Aye.
Alderman Atkins? Six zero.
Ms. Wagner, please read the bill.
An ordinance amending the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three operating budget to add one hundred sixty-five thousand dollars to the expenditure budget.
Thank you. Same agenda item, second reading. Alderman Neuladall?
Motion to approve twenty-nine eighty-one dash twenty-three fiscal year two thousand twenty-three budget amendment number two, emergency ordinance sponsored by Mayor Bulleye, second reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Alderman Russell, seconds. Any discussion? Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Shipley? Alderman Hartman? Alderman Russell?
Aye.
Alderman Neuladall?
Aye.
Alderman Atkins?
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier?
Aye.
Six zero.
Motion carries. Ms. Wagner, please read the bill.
An ordinance amending the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three operating budget to add one hundred sixty-five thousand dollars to the expenditure budget.
Item on the agenda is number eleven. Alderman Neuladall?
Motion to approve bill number twenty-nine eighty-two dash twenty-three, condemnation of property, first reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Alderman Hartman?
Mayor, I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Got a question.
Yes.
The only thing holding us up is just the agreement on the value.
Chuck?
The discussions I've had with the property owners of all three properties have centered around value. And that's, we just are too far apart. To bring something to the board, recommend.
Where do we get our values from?
So I'm not an appraiser. So the only thing I could do is use the county appraisers valuation. And pretty much we've treated everybody equally. Similar properties, offering them similar amounts. So we've made some adjustments to the county appraisers based on. You know, one commercial property next to another commercial property, why is this less than this? So we've opted for the higher one. We haven't paid an exceptional amount. Usually our easements don't, we paid like twenty-five percent for. Permanent easements, ten percent for temporary easements. And when you figure that all out, doesn't amount to much for these three particular properties.
doesn't amount to much for these three particular properties. They were just, I mean, we're not even in the same ballpark. So I just can't feasibly bring it to the board and say, I recommend because I don't know values of properties.
How many easements have you already got on this project?
Eleven.
Thank you.
And Chuck, so they go through a process where they have like three appraisers, is that?
So initially, we we hire an appraiser. It's a professional appraiser. I've just given him the information. He's going to make his own appraisal. Basically, he does a value of the property before the taking, value of the property after the taking. And whatever that difference is, is value that we are taking. And then we'll sit down with all the owners and we'll discuss with them, you know, what the appraisal is and what it says and stuff like that. We can come to an agreement at any time. You know, we can offer more. They can take less. They won't take less, but we can offer more. We can come to any agreement that the board feels comfortable in doing. You know, the other side of it is, is from from my perspective, I can't make an offer that's extreme because that also sets the prices for the next properties that I buy. So I don't want to set that precedent because trying to treat everybody the same, basically. So if we can't come to an agreement, you know, after the appraisal, then basically go to the court and the court will find three appraisers. They'll they'll pick the appraisers and they they'll come to, they'll do their own appraisals. They'll meet, they'll come to a determination and that'll be it. And then we'll pay whatever that is. So it's the fairest way for the property owner because they're getting multiple bites at appraisals if they want. And they can also get their own. If they get their own and they bring it to us, we can have that discussion. But right now, neither the owners or myself really have the true value of, you know, they have what they think and my property is always worth more to me than it is to you. So you know, they've presented what they what they would like and it's just too far apart.
And what what the court ordered, appraisers, whatever that number comes in at, are are we still required to go with that number? Or if it's like lower, or if ours is higher, can we?
Once the judgment's made, and and usually it's not going to be lower if it goes that far. Then we'll pay into the court that amount and then we can take, take that right from that property. Now, most of these properties, we are within the average easement. And so the properties already have restrictions based on the average easement. On one of the properties, we do get outside that easement. So they'll probably, I don't know how that will affect the value either. I didn't take that even into account when I made my offer.
Any other questions? My truck is up here. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Hartman? Alderman Russell?
Hi.
Alderman Yulidol?
Hi.
Alderman Atkins? Alderman Chevalier? Alderman Shipley? Six zero.
Ms. Wagner, please read the bill.
An ordinance authorizing condemnation of certain lands for the purpose of constructing and maintaining a sewer line.
Thank you. Next, I'm going to correct this card because it has number twelve, which is the old agenda, self at thirteen because it's for senior center. Yep. Next item on the agenda is number twelve. Alderman Yulidol.
Motion to approve bill number twenty nine eighty three dash twenty two, condemnation of property. First reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. Very similar. Last one, any discussion? The number is wrong on the agenda, too. It should be dash twenty three. Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Russell? Alderman Yulidol?
Hi.
Alderman Atkins? Alderman Chevalier?
Hi.
Alderman Shipley? Alderman Hartman? Six zero.
Ms. Wagner, please read the bill.
An ordinance authorizing condemnation of certain lands for the purpose of constructing and maintaining a sewer line.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number thirteen, resolution eleven ninety two. Alderman Yulidol.
Motion to approve a resolution eleven ninety two, agreement with the Smithville Senior Center.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mayor, I'll second.
Thank you. Polly, you're up. Thank you for being here tonight. State your name and address for the record and you have three minutes. If you need more, let me know.
Hey, my name is Polly Delahant. I live at thirteen four hundred Forest Oak Strive in Smithville. And I am the secretary of the Board of Directors for the Senior Center. We basically approves of the lease, but we had a little problem with some of the language in section one. But the third sentence starts, the city retains the right to review the number of seniors benefiting from this agreement. We would like it to end there and we would like to cut out the remaining part that says, and the need for the building space accordingly, the city retains the right to either provide the same or similar services itself in the building or elsewhere, or to use the building for any other needed purpose. We're a little uncomfortable with that last section. And would like that cut.
Mayor, if I might, Polly and Matt and I spoke right before the meeting and and staff would concur with that change.
And then our vice president asked me just before I came up here to ask you, what guarantee do we have that we will never be evicted?
Uh, we can't make future financial decisions for board members, but yeah, I don't. That's, you guys are using it. I don't really.
I would note though that the contract does outline a timeline for notification for all that and there would be those discussions that is outlined in the contract.
Yep. And I think that language is actually in there in case you got, you guys agree the space for us to be able to look for additional space based on Clay County Senior Services guidance, but that's okay to, I'm okay with striking it. We need a motion in a second to remove that piece. Okay. I get a motion to remove the section if you under section one, put a period after agreement and then strike through to needed purpose. Just say so moved.
Don't move.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mayor, I'll second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I know, it's fine.
Can we have some discussion?
Yes, sir. Motion. But motion and second. And then, so any discussion on this amendment? All those in favor of the amended section, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. And then back to the original resolution, any discussion on the original motion on the table?
Have some discussion, Mr. Mayor, please. A couple lines of clear to clear up here on on the, and I spoke with Cynthia. First of all, thank you to Matt and Cynthia earlier for 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 their work that they've done on this. I appreciate your help and your work on this. Thank you. I did have a discussion earlier concerning the request for action and the the verbiage on there that the period from March first to December thirty first, twenty twenty three has noted when I talked with Cynthia in the cooperative agreement, section two terms, item B does say perpetual unless terminated. I might like to make a note on that, too, that it's it one, one document says less than a year. The other one says perpetual unless terminated by either party with or without cause. I think that one gives me a little bit of pause on the protection of the senior citizens for the senior citizens. And there's no rental agreement amount based in this. So it's basically perpetual until somebody wants to to call it quits and no dollar amount for a rental. So you you don't have a stipulated time. For example, it could be, you know, two months, two months after signing the contract, we say we want to end this. It's not, I know Cynthia said there's a a process to go through as far as finding additional places, et cetera, but I know that that from a a security standpoint, it's it's really, really leery. Just just for those things that I think need to be, at least the verb is cleaned up. And then just to to make note that perpetual unless terminated by either party and and no rental agreement dollar amount. So I'm guessing there is no dollar amount rental agreement. Is that correct?
Clarify, that is correct. The language in the RFA noted a dollar amount, a one dollar per year amount for that was included in the prior agreement. There is nothing in this agreement. And then to clarify, that timeframe for notification is by either party of a desire for a a change to the contractor or vacation of of the facility.
Section eleven subsection B has a hundred and twenty day written notice.
Mm hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor approving resolution eleven ninety two as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is number fourteen. Alderman Yulidol.
Motion to approve resolution eleven ninety three, award bid number twenty three dash zero four, sanitary sewer rehabilitation.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mayor, I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor approving resolution eleven ninety three, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is resolution eleven ninety four. Alderman Yulidol.
Motion to approve resolution eleven ninety four, final plat, Fairview Crossing North.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mayor, I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor approving resolution eleven ninety four, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is resolution eleven ninety five. I have motion to approve resolution eleven ninety five, Alderman Yulidol.
Motion to approve resolution eleven ninety five, preliminary plat, second Clayton Meadows.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Alderman Shipley?
Second.
Thank you.
I want to accuse myself.
Thank you. Thanks, Matt. Any discussion? All those in favor approving resolution eleven ninety five, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no.
No.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is next item on the agenda is resolution eleven ninety three.
Ninety six.
Sorry, eleven ninety six. Got to mark that off. There we go. Number seventeen, Alderman Yulidol.
Motion to approve resolution eleven ninety six, authorization number eighty nine, amendment number one, additional engineering for raw raw water pump station.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mayor, I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor approving resolution eleven ninety six, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is number eighteen, eleven ninety seven, Alderman Yulidol.
Motion to approve a what? Resolution eleven ninety seven, amendment number one to authorization number ninety two, engineering for Smith's Ford Pump Station Force Main.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor approving resolution eleven ninety seven, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is resolution eleven ninety eight. Alderman Yulidol.
Motion to approve resolution eleven ninety eight, award bid sewer for streetscape phase three.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor approving resolution eleven ninety eight, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is resolution eleven ninety nine. Alderman Yulidol.
Motion to approve a resolution eleven ninety nine, award RFP twenty three dash zero three, Fourth Street and Fourth Terrace Utility.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mayor, I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor approving resolution eleven ninety nine, say aye.
Aye.
Oh. Motion carries. Any additional public comment? Need new business? That entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session?
Excuse me, Mayor, I have some new business.
Yes.
I look a little bit late here. I apologize. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to propose that the city draft a bill for the city of Smithville to not have any business practices with investments or contracts with entities engaged in or related to ideological boycotts, political correctness, social engineering, or other discriminatory conduct concerning environmental, social, or governance standards commonly referred to as ESG. And for the city of Smithville to divest from investments with entities engaging in ideological boycotts and to provide protection for businesses in Smithville from these business practices, the city of Smithville will divest from investment with entities engaged in ideological boycotts and will disqualify financial institutions from receiving deposits of city monies and prohibit the city from entering into any contract without written verification that the contractor is not engaged or engaging in discriminatory practices of ideological boycotts. Thank you.
Here, any other new business? All right, now on the number twenty three. Second, Alderman Yulidol.
Motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to section six one zero dot zero two one subsection three, RSMO.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Hartman?
Hi.
Alderman Atkins?
Hi.
Alderman Yulidol?
Hi.
Alderman Chevalier? Alderman Shipley?
Hi.
Alderman Russell?
Hi.
Six zero.
Stand adjourned to executive session. Some of those are a mouthful. Raw, raw water. Raw water. No, not going to happen.